Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the Finance Committee meeting on nine sixteen twenty twenty one. With Tom Moore and Lindsay Haggett. I'll never know your title, so.
That works. It's a strange title, I agree.
Just looking for updates, that's about it.
Sure, yeah, I I'll go first real quick. So we are still in the public outreach phase. Counselor, you, as you know, you have a session on Wednesday. That's another public listening session. I'm very much looking forward to that. We've been doing a number of neighborhood meetings and those have been very interesting. And I will say, there's been a lot of overlap. Like, I've been hearing, as you might expect, right? And we probably could have talked and said, we could probably come up with the four or five things that almost every neighborhood is going to tell us. And I bet you we're pretty close to right. And we would have been right, you know, and and it's not hard to think that people are looking for similar improvements to their neighborhoods. There's similar support for their small businesses. So that's a lot of what we've been hearing. And it's been very helpful because there's been some ideas that I that I've been able to think of and kind of get that I never would have thought of, you know, from talking to groups about more specific needs, you know, trying to figure out how we, you know, how does this tie into ARPA funds? You know, how can we do these things even if it doesn't tie into our funds maybe? You know what I mean? Like, trying to get a little bit of creative with not just the money we have from ARPA, but using the money we have on hand plus our ARPA to to really do some of these other things that maybe neighborhoods are wanting. There's a lot of discussion of, you know, making the city itself more walkable and accessible and having better roadways and better sidewalks and better intersections. And, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about that from the neighborhood groups. So it's interesting how it it worked out where, you know, the top three things are pretty much the same.
What's the top three again?
I would say if you you had to make a list, that number one would be like what I would call quality of life concern. Or, you know, I wouldn't say it's public safety necessarily. It's more like quality of life where it's like some code stuff where you have a lot of things with, you know, we just, it looks like our neighborhood's gotten more, you know, just people have gotten not taking care of their places and there's more trash, there's more people speeding around and running red lights. Just general quality of life type stuff you you might think of. And then, you know, there was a good emphasis on infrastructure. Like, like I said, roadway, I want my, I need my road fixed. My road is, I need my sidewalks fixed and not walkable. There's crosshocks that are super dangerous and we need to fix the signaling, stuff like that. Like, you know, again, all stuff you might think of. And then, you know, the other piece was, we'd love to see more small business in the neighborhoods as opposed to like just small businesses downtown. And that's all again. We we all could have said that, okay, yeah, that's, and so in every group's different, right? So when we were in Indian Orchard, the the concerns of IO are are a little different for their storefronts than it is for where we were in Upper Hill today. But they're both saying the same thing. They want their small businesses supported and they want to have programs to grow new business and try to create, you know, viable storefronts that are walkable for people to just kind of go out of their home and go get service, go buy something simple that's basic to them. So it's been, like I said, a lot of overlap. And and outside of that, the last category, every group has had a a building or a project that they've sort of said is key. You know, for example, you 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 could totally guess it in Hungry Hill, that it's Our Lady of Hope. That's not a surprise. But it's similar, like every neighborhood has said, no, this building, we need to do something with this particular structure, you know, and even talking in Upper Hill today, they were talking about the Homer School and talking about uh, you know, to get some real good public use and the best reuse of that. So those have really been the ones. And every neighborhood has had something where it's been in that okay, or one of all three of those categories, for sure. So we're almost, we're getting close to the end of public outreach. Um, I've been sort of careful to not, I don't want to speed through this as much as I want to be able to get the money and the RP's ready. And I think it's right now at the pace it should be. We're not going to be done with this until we get maybe into the first week of October where the public outreach phase is fully completed. And then, you know, as I've discussed, you know, with with various counselors, there's going to be a period of time where the draft RP's are going to be looked at by, you know, the council members, by the the business groups and the nonprofit groups we've met with to be able to get additional feedback and and kind of refine though. And once that process is complete, and that's probably maybe like a ten day process, something like that, to give enough time for that to happen, we're going to be able to roll out the first kind of RFPs. And I think the three for sure that will be out in the initial phase will be small business and and new business, kind of new business, small business, nonprofit, and then neighborhood slash household assistance. You know, that's, those are going to be the three for sure. And it may end up being the capital one because I feel like, geez, we hear so much about, you have a lot of good idea about what they think to be done capitalized. And maybe they're ready, hey, we want to pitch, here's a proposal of the city, you money for this building. Like, maybe, you know what I mean? I'm I'm getting more convinced that that's another one that's coming out first because of what I've been hearing.
Okay, all right, sounds good. But there's no like cap amount per organization as far as the ARPA funds go yet?
No, no, it's a great question. You know, that's a good question. There's gotta be at some level some parameter set for each bucket. There has to be. And I I've been thinking less of it in terms of, okay, we're assigning a certain number, number, number X to this bucket as opposed to, it should be like a range, I think. It should be more like a range. Like, we have about up until this much money between this much and this much for this kind of group. And I keep going to like the small groups in trying to figure this out first, which is like, say, the seniors assistance, you know? There's definitely a place for senior assistance in the city that's come across in the meeting. Two, again, it's somewhere lower than those three numbers that we talked about. It's there, but you know, you may have. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. This, I got alarms going off in my house. Kind of alarm is going off in my home. Sorry, I just lost train of thought where I was going with that. Um, what was I, was I talking about the?
I think we're talking about the buckets, seniors.
Yes, I'm sorry, right. Trying to find the range of the money. I'm I'm sorry. When you're trying to find the range of the money, that's when I think of where I go, I don't want to say I've got X amount of money for that senior bucket because I don't know what we're going to get for proposals. We may get way less than we think. We may get way more. Like, so it's, I think it should be a range. And for that one, it's like, okay, do we put up to, you know, four million dollars for senior assistance or three minutes for a small bucket like that. That way we have a range. If we only end up spending like a million dollars, it doesn't look like we, you know, that money can get re put into a different bucket, you know, and there may be a greater need in the neighborhood assistance bucket. Or the capital bucket, right? And so I'm thinking of it like that.
Capital improvements around the town.
Come across for sure. Yes, agreed.
Yep, okay. Counselors, do you have questions?
None, not really. I think Attorney Moore, good afternoon, everybody, has done a very good.
Hi, Counselor Davila.
Well, that's a very good job explaining. The one thing I just want to be clear, Tom, is that there's no limit to use this money, correct?
Counselor, that is correct. What's interesting about the act is is how
What do you mean? Hold on, what do you mean by limit? Because it can't be used for real estate tax, right?
Right? What I, what I, the way I took that question, I'm sorry, was in terms of like theoretical amount that you could spend in any bucket. What's interesting about the act is that it it, not that any one community would do this, but it does not seem to prohibit you from saying, okay, the need is so great in this particular category, we're literally going to take ninety-five percent of the money and use it for this. And this is the COVID impact we had, and this is what we're going to do. It seems like you could do that, but I think what you'll see most people do is what what we're proposing, which is you got to spread it out as much as you can. Even though some items will be more expensive than others, you really can't put that much in any one bucket. But what, yeah, we do have a finite amount. There's a hundred and what, twenty-three million dollars is like the the amount we have to to, you know, to spend overall. And there are restrictions of what we could theoretically spend it on. It cannot be used for certain things, like, for example, like putting in fulfilling, I think, pension fund obligations is one thing they don't let you do. There's some stuff that's very specific they will not let you do.
Oh, but um.
Again, none of which we were thinking to do.
Oh, but um, my question was, there's there's no time limit to use this money.
The money limits are obligation. So, yeah. Time limits, the obligation is you have to obligate the money by twenty twenty-four in December. And then you have to spend all of the money, or, you know, you have to spend the money by the end of the year in twenty twenty-six. So we have it's just like a five-year period essentially to spend the month. And that, you know, that's a lot of time, but then it's not, right? Like, you know, and if we build the process correctly and it works, hopefully like I think it will, then we'll be able to spend all that money and we won't have a problem. That's, but but we do have, there is a time limit there, you know, there is a finite amount of time we have to oblige.
Right, right. And so the one thing that I will kind of echo what you were saying, what other of the neighborhoods and slash residents are saying is the infrastructure, particularly the sidewalk. I think our regular annual budget for sidewalk does not exceed one point seven million dollars, just if I remember correctly. And that's, that's a bar, that's a drop at the bucket. And so if we can't get some of the sidewalks done, it will be a great hit and a great infrastructure project for the city. As TJ was saying the other day at the regular meeting, it's it's another way of encouraging and not only creating community, but also to to empower and to boost local economy. So something that if that were to happen, it will be a great, great furthering of cap.
Thank you. Counselor Hurst?
I have nothing. Just listening in.
Lindsay, has any other funds been spent that we don't know about thus far?
So as of right now, the only funds that have been obligated are the union settlements for the few unions that have been announced.
Okay. There was a letter that came out today about the schools getting, I don't know if they're in negotiation with the school side now about the nurse and tradesmen getting funding, or was that just a letter saying that they want to, we want to support them?
The mayor is using the city's ARPA funding to provide merit bonuses to both the school nurses and the tradesmen. They're both school employees. But they were called back to help HHS, the school nurses helped HHS specifically with contact tracing, vaccine administration, testing. And then the tradesmen were called back on the city side for facilities work. They built the Friends of the Homeless tent that went up on Worthington Street. And they retrofit all the school and city buildings with like air purifiers. I don't know exactly what the term is for them, but retrofitted all of those for the air quality in the schools in the city.
Thank you. Whose number is four one three three four?
That's Attorney Moore. Yeah, I'm sorry. I I tried, I'm in the middle of transporting to soccer practice and I tried to leave the area. I'm not a tech savvy guy. You guys know me. I'm not super tech savvy guy. So when I tried to leave my driveway, we're thinking I could keep the Zoom going with just me like speaking to everyone. It's like obviously shut off my wifi and did something where I couldn't continue. And so I had to call on the phone. So I'm sorry that I I was trying to I even tried to jump back on and explain it. I don't know what happened. It all got confused. So I'm glad I can get back on. Give me a second to get the ID punched in. Sorry.
No problem.
It's a good thing you have soccer practice at five, you know, you're you're lucky. You you ought to be lucky. Unfortunately, I got to go to mine at six fifteen, so. You know, mu- much, much better.
My life with that is.
Cancel, cancel.
Yeah, I'm at six thirty, so I had to rush up and give backs and do dinner before then, so.
I'm not envious of you guys. Not at all. I remember that life. Counselor Davila, your hands up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lindsay, good afternoon, good to see you. Would you be able to provide us with the total amount of ARPA money used so far for everything, including non-bargaining and bargaining, the whole pot of everything that has been allocated already?
So we've already provided non-bargaining. Yep. So the merit raises have not gone through yet, through payroll. So I don't have the remainder of those right now, but I'm happy to provide it once they go through.
Okay, yeah, if you could please. And also any other project that specifically was used with ARPA money and the amount allocated to it, please. Now, I have a suggestion, Madam Chair, right? You know, we have five years to use this money. And I'm sure this will be the first of many meetings. But do you think, Lindsay, will it be possible to get a expenditure report on specifically with ARPA money provided?
Yeah, so Counselor, I'm I'm really hoping to avoid a duplication of efforts. And we're going to be quarterly reporting ARPA funding to the federal level. So what I'm hoping is that once we get the ball rolling with that, we can provide that same report to the city council.
I want, what do you expect? You want to submit the first report?
Um, I think the first one is due October thirty-first.
Yeah, that's correct. October thirty-first is the first, like, major report we have to file. You know, as much as, it's on my calendar, I can promise you.
Tom and I have been talking about this. The reporting requirements for ARPA, I think, are going to be a pretty heavy lift. So I'm hoping, like I said, to avoid a duplication of efforts and just potentially providing you that quarterly.
Well, I'm sorry, Counselor. The first, I think the report that gets produced out of that is not just going to be what you would think of as like a statistical report only. It's going to have, like, we have certain, I guess, for lack of a better word, like narration items that we're going to have to put in writing to 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 detail the report. So there's going to be quite a bit of information that you'll be able to derive from those reports. Hopefully, they'll be very comprehensive. I mean, let's put it this way, the goal is to make them as comprehensive as possible so that when they're looked upon in the future, we don't have any big holes to fill for information for the law.
Thank you. And I agree with you, Lindsay, duplication of services because if something that we know beforehand, it will, I think it will be more efficient or how the money is being used.
And I think that really with, you know, with communication with Attorney Moore and obviously with the Finance Department, I think you'll know about spending before it ends up on that report because that's a look back. So I would assume that you will know about everything coming out that you will be seeing on the report because I believe it's it's a quarterly report, but I do, I believe it's within a month back.
But, and Madam Chair, I do have a suggestion, if I could. Both Lindsay and Tom, they do a fantastic job. And I appreciate you both guys. And I know sometimes we might be critical, but that's within the role that we are city councillors. And so you guys, I I do appreciate your job because you are indeed an asset to the city. So I thank you both for that. But Madam Chair, I I feel that perhaps it might be appropriate to have the mayor come and talk to either the Finance Committee or a special meeting because I kind of would like to hear straight from the horse's mouth about the vision, what's going on. I know Lindsay and Attorney Moore are doing a fantastic job by trying to keep us abreast. But I think given the the transformative use, the transformative transformation, the potential transformation, transformative nature of this money, which we so badly needed, I think it will be appropriate for the mayor to just come and have a conversation with us. Just throwing that out there, Madam Chair, whether we be through this committee or through a special meeting of the whole. I think if the mayor accepts, which I hope he does, come and have just an open, frank discussion with us. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Lindsay.
We can always ask. Counselor Hurst?
Yeah, I I think that's a phenomenal idea, Counselor Davila. Definitely think we should extend the invitation. Two, two questions. One, Attorney Moore, do we have any idea in terms of a breakdown as to what it is that we're planning on spending each year? Have we thought about it in 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 those terms or we sort of just?
It's a good question, Counselor. Yeah, I've I've been thinking about that a lot, actually, about when you have a big grant, right, or often higher big grant, or oftentimes it's a big pool of money to do it in tranches, right? You always hear that term where you're having a certain amount of money eligible to be accessed, you know, in this this period of time. And then when you get through that period of time, depending on how much money is in the tranche, you you get a second tranche or a third and et cetera. So the recovery money isn't scripted to go that way. You don't have to do that. When you get all the money, you're encouraged to use it as you think is appropriate in your jurisdiction. So it's up to us if we want to hold certain funds back or not. And, you know, what I've been thinking of is you you're going to have a certain influx of funds that come out and and there's a need that's immediate, you know, and and there's a few few sectors I think that clearly fits into, you know, I guess, small business and and, you know, certain like household needs or or neighborhood type services fall into that category. But you're going to have a certain sizable chunk of the money that does not get spent right away and probably doesn't get spent until we get into or obligated to be spent until we get into twenty twenty-three maybe. You know, this is, it's going to be a multi-year process of awards. So I have been thinking a lot about, you know, do we set up rules, so to speak, or kind of the parameters for the release of the money internally that say we're going to put a cap this year on this much ARPA money being released or or not, you know, and I haven't, I don't think there's any, been any kind of consensus raised on that. And and I'm sort of a little bit reluctant to even establish any of that because it's a little bit of an unknown, right? You know, I'm trying to forecast for, you know, three and a half, four years into the future with obligation money and that's that's tricky. I don't want to get carried away thinking I know that I can say, all right, you know, we're going to spend twenty percent of the money in twenty-one, we're going to spend forty percent in in twenty-two, and we're going to spend, you know, thirty percent in twenty-three. I I'm not, I'm I'm not confident at all that I would be able to forecast that or really anybody could at this point. So you know what I mean? Like, but it's a really good question because I've been thinking about it a lot, like, I don't know. And I'd love to hear what you guys kind of thought on that pro- that idea because there is some sense and some reason behind the concept of saying, okay, we probably should reserve something and at least at some level have something that we can hold on to that we know we're not going to delve into at all, you know, until we get into twenty-three, maybe, you know, into the twenty-three period where we're running on the back end of the obligation, you know, timetable.
Yeah, no. So my recommendation would be that you do something along those lines, just because you want to be able to assess what it is that is working and what it is that is not working, what might, you know, require more funding for various different reasons and what doesn't. And so, you know, it seemed to me that if we're really looking for things to be sustainable and long lasting, we want to make sure that we're investing the money properly. I mean, right now, something may seem like a great idea. You know, but give it six months to a year and it's like, all right, we just threw this money down the tube. So I definitely would recommend that in some some way, shape or form. And I rely on you guys.
It is not, let's put it this way, Counselor, it is not full throttle, open money awarding at this state. You know what I mean? That cannot be how it works, where the whole nozzle, the hose is just at full blast. It's got to be more of like this kind of consistent flow, sort of, you know what I mean? That's how I'm looking at it. And you're right. The 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 concept of reserving money is very much how I was looking at it too, is that you got, you have to be able to assess it over the period of years because it's quite a bit of time. So, you know what I mean? You gotta be able to say in year two, I know I have great success on some fronts and I know the money has not had the impact that I wanted, or we thought it was going to on other fronts. And obviously, you're going to invest in the ones that showed the results more in the second two years than you did in the first years when you weren't sure. And you didn't quite know, right? I mean, that's, I think, sort of what we're, we we want to happen. So it's a very good point and a good question. Yeah.
Okay. And then finally, Lindsay, there was some documentation that we that we requested. I think Counselor Whitfield had initially requested it and then I added some follow-up requests to it. But one that I haven't seen is the is the percentage of which folks on that list who receive merit pay work from home. And so if we can either go back to that email, if you need me to send it again, that would be great. I know what TJ said. I know what TJ sent out was not as helpful to me. Although I know it's difficult for you guys to get the breakdown the same way you you gave it to us in the Excel breakdown. So if you can't make those two what TJ gave me and what what's in Excel aligned, because I really want to know who was left out by department. I mean, I can't believe that there were that many people left out. But I I'm certainly not going to be doing the cross checking.
Did you get, did I get it?
I think you did. The the one that TJ gave.
Yeah, it was the, I'm sorry. So it's a list of everybody who got an ARPA bonus. And I'm sorry, it's a list of every non-bargaining employee and if they got an ARPA bonus. So the problem is we run into limitations with Munis in that we have an employee information table and we have a salary table and the two do not talk to each other. So for me to run a report that shows how much this person was paid in ARPA bonus and all the information we're looking for, Munis just does not have that capability. It would, it would be a manual process. So that's why we weren't able to provide that to you when you were looking for more of the information. As far as the request for the percentage work from home, that was part of what was included in Bill's in HR's rubric for the justification for department heads to give for the merit bonuses. So that information has been provided. So I I do believe that that would be available for you. I would, again, I would just have to pull it together because all department heads send different files and just a lot of manual putting things together.
Okay, so so there's not, there wasn't any sort of database in which folks were going off of that was used when determining the amount of time that folks worked from home?
So the department head was probably using, again, another system, not Munis Kronos, which is our time and attendance software. So they were probably, if they didn't already know, because most departments had rotations of employees coming in and those rotations stayed the same for safety reasons. You worked with the same pot of people on Tuesdays that you did on Thursdays. And then the next group came into the department, so it was set up to work that way. But but the information was tracked in Kronos, which is again, separate from Munis, they do not talk to each other. So the department head, I would assume, I didn't fill out one of the reports, but I would assume the department had, was able to pull that information from Kronos if needed to determine the the information to give to HR.
Okay, so what would be helpful for me is, again, going based off of that Excel spreadsheet if possible and maybe doing another column for the percentage of, you know, reflecting how much folks worked from home and how much folks worked from the office. If it's not overly cumbersome and then what also might be helpful is, as opposed to what TJ sent me. And I got to go back and look at it again. But if there's a way in which we could just identify the individuals that didn't get bonuses and put that on a separate sheet of paper, that would be helpful too. I I I feel like we got them all together.
Yeah, they are all together because that's the way it was run. So I could, I mean, all it would take for me to do is just sort it and just copy it and put it on another.
That that would be helpful because I might, I don't know what I'll do with it, but that would be helpful. Right? Thank you.
Can I just say one thing, Counselor Hurst? So for the information you're looking for, when I get into the office tomorrow, I am going to look and see how long realistically it's going to take for me to put the information together and then I'll let you know. Okay?
Yeah, let me know. Yeah, let me know. Otherwise, I'll just take it in whatever format you have and and then I'll have to put in the work. So. It is what it is.
Okay, thank you for understanding.
Thank you. Yeah, because we definitely got some people that we need to follow up with that feel that they were treated unfairly as far as the bonuses go. And so I definitely don't want to leave them in the loop. But I wanted to see, Lindsay, if you could do an all ARPA fund, kind of like spreadsheet for us, like, I know it's the one twenty-three, but that's separate from the twenty-nine, correct? From the county amount?
Well, the county amount just hasn't been, it had not been added yet to the ARPA budget. Except at first.
Because it's separate, but people are saying one twenty-three, not counting the twenty-nine, and so it's a little bit off.
The one twenty-three includes the twenty-nine.
Oh, it includes the twenty-nine. Okay. And and also, if you could just do all ARPA funds, I just want to know any ARPA funds that came in. I know Housing got six point six million or Plan and Echo Dev, whatever department, and then CDBG got something from ARPA. I just want to know every part of ARPA funding, like, if you could do that. I don't know that we'll have a meeting next Thursday because I'm going away. So it'll probably be the following week. So if you could do that, that'd be helpful.
Yes, that will be an easy, that will be an easy one, yes.
Okay. And I have one more thing, but I think I'm acting, I'm a little like Tom and I, and I lost it.
I had several of those moments today. You don't even know. What is happening to you? So many conversations that I'm just losing it. I'm, I'm, my, my mind's moving. So many conversations that I'm just losing it. I'm I'm, my, my mind's moving, in my mouth, I'm moving at different speeds.
Write it down immediately or it's gone, but um, yeah. We could work on those things and on what Counselor Hurst and I asked in the other emails about the um. Folks that didn't get the bonuses.
So is there anything else besides that outstanding that you're waiting for or expecting?
I think, I think.
Okay, good, because I know that you had initially sent emails, but I know that other conversations happened that I know. You know, you may have spoken with TJ offline and got the information you needed, or it was. Given to you in another meeting, so I just want to make sure that you're not outside of what we just spoke about, you're not waiting for anything from us.
No, I think I have to go back through that email trail because we got the list from you and then Counselor Hurst asked for something, and then I asked for something in addition too. I can't remember what. It was that we both asked for. So in addition, but I think it's in that email strand. And then, and then just the list of all the ARPA funds, not.
Yes, so you mean that all the ARPA funding awarded to the city? That, like I said, that will be easy enough.
Thank you. Any other questions from my colleagues or comments? Nope. All right, then we will adjourn this meeting. There's a six o'clock, um. Special meeting, but I won't be on that, guys. I just, my head hurts, I'm laying down. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, bye, everybody.